Good evening. I'd like to call this Wednesday, April 9th, 2025, meeting of the City of Manassas Park Planning Commission to Order. The time is 7:00 PM. My name is Lester Finkel. Sitting this evening are Michael Carrera, John Evans, Michael Beckets, and Kevin P. Tac. I will lead us in the moment of silence and pledge of allegiance for this evening.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our agenda item next is approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Some move.
Motion second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We have next the adoption of minutes from the February 12th, 2025, meeting. I did not see any edits. Did anyone else see any edits? Seeing none, would anyone care to make a motion to adopt the meeting minutes for February 12th, 2025, meeting as is?
Some move.
Motion second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Are there any members of the public present? Okay. Our main item of business this evening is public hearing for fiscal year 2026 to fiscal year 2030 Capital Improvement Program. And I will turn it over to City Manager Cole.
Do you have to officially open the public hearing?
I will look at you. I will open up the public hearing. I guess I did not go that formal there, thank you. So I will open the public hearing at this time for that item, and the time is 7:02.
I may ask, because I don't know if you're getting access.
That's okay. As City Manager Cole, it's all yours.
Well, thank you, Chair and the Planning Commission. I've actually been looking forward to this presentation because I feel like it's a do-over. My first couple of weeks here was long meeting after long meeting on the CIP with all of the department heads. And then here's the Planning Commission. And I didn't really know what I was looking at. I didn't know how to digest it or how to understand it, but I have a slightly better grasp of it now. I'm not going to say I have a full handle on it, but definitely feel much more comfortable about talking about it today, so. So I just want to start, I do want to thank all the department directors that participated in the Assembly of this, also the school district. You know, I mean, this is a tremendous amount of work. You know, I think there's sort of a sense that, you know, we're a poor city, barely getting by, these sorts of things. But, you know, forty, fifty million dollars is a lot of money. And so, you know, we had to make some changes from the presentation that we made in early February, I believe. Tony and I have spent a lot of time crunching numbers and doing different things to try to get the 2026 budget to balance. So I want to thank her as well. I appreciate the effort you put in. I don't think anybody's spent as much time on this as she has, so. So, yeah, so there's some things we have to kick down the road. We, you know, we have some issues with not necessarily knowing where we are financially in a couple of areas that I think will be remedied very soon. And so I anticipate that what we see today won't actually be what we execute in fiscal year 26, so. With that, I'm going to go through the slides. Right? Yes. Most of the administrative components are unchanged. You know, most, the only real changes are the projects and then some of the numbers. So obviously, we have, you know, we have to do a five-year capital improvement plan. We have, we have the general fund, we have three enterprise funds, surface, oh, you call it, no, storm water, water and sewer, and then the solid waste. So we're responsible for making those things all work every five years around a five-year sliding, oops. Somebody just logged into the meeting. I don't know if that matters, but, okay. So, yeah, so there's about, I think, 180 slides here. I'm going to spend about two minutes on each one. Just kidding. But the, we'll highlight a couple of the projects for 2026. But you're welcome to ask questions on anything that's in there. So most of the stuff that's in there, we have people in the room that can speak to the details of it. And so feel free to ask questions if I don't hit something you are particularly interested in. I had tech problems last time, too. There we go. That's just a tech problem. All right, there we go. Numbers. Again, these will change a little bit from what you saw in February. We're looking at spending 113, almost 114 million dollars over five years. You'll see a number of times with throughout this presentation that we like to back transportation out of that. Calvin has a guy named Steve that works for him that is, I think he's probably a thief, but for whatever reason, he comes up with a lot of money to pay for our projects. Of course, I'm kidding. But, but it does, it skews the numbers and it really skews the balance of things when you include all those transportation dollars in there because transportation projects are very expensive and, but we get a lot of money for them, so. Just again, a couple of notes, school security, city hall lease payments are part of the admin and the general services section and the fleet lease program, which we'll talk about a little bit later. But this is the overview of what the general fund CIP looks like for the next five years. I think I have to hit it harder. There you go. Again, I told you 113, almost 114 million. This is how it breaks out. Sixty-two percent of that for transportation projects because they're expensive. And we're in desperate need of having some improvements to our transportation network throughout the city. Not just maintenance, but, but also improvements. And one of the things I always like to look at when I'm prioritizing projects is if we already paid for it, we're obligated to maintain it, you know, and so, I mean, that's what you have to do to take good care of the public dollars. And so we're going to have a little bit more focus on that, I think, going through the next five years to see that we can get some of our, our projects that we already paid for into acceptable shape. And I haven't shared that with Calvin yet, so he's probably taking notes. This is the breakdown, though. 6.4 for park safety, 5.3 for schools, 5.7 for fleet, which we'll talk about. And the rest are the smaller amounts. This year, or fiscal year 25, general fund CIP was 45.2 million, not including transportation. Now, in fiscal year 26, we're proposing 42 million, not including transportation. I think I mentioned we had to make some changes to make our budget balance. And, and so our, our capacity for projects is a little less. Plus, things are a lot more expensive this year than they were last year, so things cost more. Water and sewer CIP, five years. You know, we're responsible for paying for our share of U.O.S.A. maintenance and upgrades. And so that's a pretty significant portion, is the most significant portion. And we pay for our water, as I've found is a hot topic in Manassas Park, is the amount we pay for water. And, and then the rest of the smaller projects are areas that are represented there. Storm water, same thing. I think, I still can't, surface water, we call it surface water, but I've got to get that out of my head. Same thing. We have a very old system, have some problems that need to be addressed, usually on an emergent basis. So infrastructure repair, replace, upgrade, maintenance is the big, big spender in that fund. Here's the summary for the total CIP. Again, eighty percent of the CIP goes to those transportation projects, which we don't, most, ninety-nine percent of the money is not tax money, but not our tax money, not city tax money, it's other people's tax money. The next chunk, twenty-one and a half, for 21.3 for facilities, and then storm water. And remembering, those facilities includes debt service on this building. I guess that concludes the presentation. There you go. All right. Non-transportation, again, over all funds. We talked about this, 57.5 in '25. It looks a little bit earlier, or a little bit more. But that's all through all funds, excluding the transportation projects, so. Oh, and this is also where I want to mention, there was $35 million in the CIP for high school renovation and $15 million for additional fire station. It was easiest to remove those from the equation because when you're balancing your budget and you have a $15 million deficit, it's, yeah, you know, it's not necessarily in one year, but it's still, it's a big bite. And it's easier to do that and look for other options for these projects when they're needed than to cut 40 other projects that are much less expensive and more, more needed. Okay, so that's the presentation there. I'm not sure if I skipped slides or not because of the mouse situation, but I do want to highlight a couple of things in the, in what we're going to do this year. You know, there's a bunch of IT stuff in there. We can't let our systems be compromised. I know you've probably seen ransomware and all sorts of other sort of system breaches at various governments and non-government agencies and banks and all these things. So this, to me, is one of those things you can't skimp on. Come on, man. There we go. More of the same. The mouse going backwards. That's when we get through IT. It's necessary, but we don't need to dwell on it. My goodness. So maybe including all the slides wasn't the best idea? Fleet replacement program, this is the one I wanted to talk about. A few years ago, not sure how many, I think almost five, I think we have our first round of enterprise leases coming up for replacement. We made the decision to lease our vehicles through a program that Enterprise offers to governments and probably anyone else. But as I was going through the CIP process on the fleet specifically, it just, to me, I've bought a lot of cars in my life, mostly police cars, but I just couldn't believe how much the lifetime costs of some of these cars were. So Mark, your, our GSA director, has spent a considerable amount of time doing some analysis on this and trying to figure out where the break-even point is. Not to bore you too much, but there's a, there's a point at which there's, a car is in a condition due to mileage and other factors that the trade-in value is maximized. And so typically, if you're going to have an ongoing fleet program, you want to get your trade-in in that window when it's maximized to minimize the cost for its replacement. This doesn't do that. And so I, like I mentioned earlier, we had to remove a number of things from the program in order to balance the budget. But we're going to end up with some money that isn't included here because also you want to be very conservative when you're making these projections. You don't want to spend money you don't have or you're not going to have. And so I expect that we'll be back to put some of the things back in at a later date once we start realizing some of the fleet savings, either in '26 or '27. It's just simply cheaper to buy new cars than it is to lease them, especially the way the program is set up with Enterprise because we're so small, you can drive a car for five years and put 40,000 miles on it, you know. And so, I mean, maybe not the fire trucks and police cars, but, you know, some of the other vehicles, just, they just don't get miles on them. And the way cars are built these days, they don't deteriorate like they used to. And so there's a value to them, a tremendous value to them, that we're just giving back to Enterprise at five years and then starting over with a new one. And while I think it's cool, there's a, there's a, it's always been a thing in my police career where people compared themselves to other cops by what kind of car they had or how new their car was or when Chevy went to the boat-shaped cars and just, you know, all these things. But at the end of the day, we can't be concerned with that. We have to look at what's the most cost-effective and works the best for the city, so. There's numbers on this, too. It's just, I've been pushing this button the whole time. And basically, the same points I just made. There's some of the costs there. So, you know, your standard patrol vehicle SUV, over five years, we'll pay $104,505 for it. Built into our contract with Enterprise is a profit that we don't pay if we just go source the car through the state bid or the sheriff's, you know, organization. So there's going to be some significant savings there, and I just don't know how much because we need to create a policy on when we turn the cars in. And whether it's based on miles or years of service or some combination of same, that's going to determine what the actual return on the investment is, so. But we're going to get the cops or cars, just might not be leased cars. There might be owned cars, so. Same thing with public works. And parks. See, I almost felt maybe we were doing it too hard. So here's, these, these other slides, really, that was really the only thing I wanted to highlight for the projects this year. Like I said, there was, I think, over 100 slides of the projects we're doing and... Oh, okay. Got it. No problem. So anyway, if you have any questions, ask me, but, and I'll try to find the slide that applies to whatever your question is. But that's really it. It's, you know, again, I think we have a sense that, you know, we're always struggling to make ends meets and whatnot, but I think that's true everywhere. If you have a billion dollars, you're going to spend a billion dollars and you're going to fret about that last few million. And so to me, this process seems very familiar. It's just, it's just at a different scale. And so I'm not concerned, and I think we're going to be just fine. But hopefully, again, to bring new things to you that we didn't budget for right now as we look at either revenues outperforming expectations or some of the savings on some of the projects that are contained in the program, so.
Thank you. Commissioners, questions? Commissioner Beckets, did you, Commissioner P. Tac?
Yes. Thank you. Good presentation. Thank you. I'd like to commend you on, first of all, on the fleet vehicle. I think that's probably a smart idea to be buying as opposed to leasing. Does that change the maintenance of the vehicles? Because I asked that question naively because I don't know, was Enterprise doing the maintenance on the vehicles? Or were we doing the maintenance? Does it change at all?
Yeah, so we did the maintenance. You know, so your routine maintenance, oil changes, new tires, brakes. Again, on the police cars, brakes, you replace the brakes on a regular basis. So we did all that routine maintenance. If it had some kind of a failure, some kind of a warranty thing, then it wouldn't be on us. And, and plus, there's rules for if we wreck one or total one and that sort of thing. But, yeah, we, the maintenance was on us.
Okay, so that's no different by the sounds of it. And I have one general question. With all of the turmoil going on right now at the federal government level, has any of that spurt over and adversely impacted our budget at all? And I ask that a little bit naively because I think there, are there any federal funds that would be coming from the federal government that are no longer in our CIP?
Just let me restate the question, make sure I heard you right. Carl, what keeps you up at night? Yeah. Yeah, so the federal government runs on a different fiscal year than we do. And so the, most of what we've got in this budget is, has already been approved in last year's budget from the federal side. I don't know what it's going to look like moving forward. We did just get a notice of funding opportunities from the Department of Transportation yesterday, or today, recently, that was unexpected. And so that may be an indication that there is some, that there's still going to be opportunities. There's some changes that we need to make based on some of the, you know, the preferences of the current administration as far as some, you know, like EVs and bike lanes and things like that, which, which is fine. We'll make whatever changes we need to continue making our roads as safe as we can. But, but, yeah, I don't know. I can't answer that question. We're good now. We have a couple of projects that haven't started yet, that we've gotten the money for, that we've been assured we'll be able to continue with. And other than that, I don't know what's going to happen tomorrow. But, but we'll prepare for it if it, if it does.
And then more specifically along that, I thought, you know, being involved in this process last year, that for parks and rec specifically, I thought that there was funding for Signal Bay Water Park that was coming from the federal government. Is it still in the budget or?
For the improvements at Signal Bay?
Yes.
They're underway, I believe.
Okay.
Is that right, Chair?
Well, part of them are, yes. The Outpost, Spray Hands, and Safety Manny is underway. The original plan of action was to address the overall building, the facility.
Oh, okay.
But the city consulted at the moment, and they gave us a cost estimate. It was significantly higher than we anticipated, so there wasn't sufficient funding to address that.
Okay, but that wasn't because we didn't, more because we didn't ask for enough money than because we didn't get it. But they just, they resurfaced the tennis courts. And I, I don't know what they're doing now. They re-roofed the pavilion. There's other projects going out there. But I saw a really cool rendering of the new toys that are going to be out there for the kids, so. That's, the Splash Park's actually going to open up a little late this year than it normally does because the project is, is moving a little slower than we'd hoped. But, yeah, that's going to happen, so. Now, apparently, the whole building needs to be replaced at some point. We'll see what we can do. But at least it's going to have some curb appeal once this project is done.
Okay, great. And then I have one last specific question, and this, this probably is more for, better addressed by Calvin. I had attempted to ask this in the last meeting and realized I didn't ask the question very clearly, so I wanted to clarify it again. With regards to water and sewer, it looks to me like, you know, our system is aging and it just continually ages and that we replace parts of the system every year. Is that a continual thing that we will just continue to do every year from now till eternity, essentially?
So the, the older section of the city, the original township, was all constructed with cast iron pipe. And that cast iron pipe, in most instances, when we see breaks and we have to actually dig and repair that pipe, it's been bedded directly on bedrock. There's no stone dust underneath of it, no, you know, no continuous soft bedding. And the breaks occur when the temperature shifts happen. And that, that cast iron pipe that's very brittle is now, you know, rubbing up against bedrock and we get cracks in the pipe. In some areas, even of the original township, the pipe is not bedded directly on rock. It's just wherever it was trenched and they hit bedrock and they stopped digging and put pipe in, that's where we're probably going to see breaks. The goal eventually would be to get rid of all of the cast iron, but that could be a very long time from now. If we have an area of the, you know, the original township that has cast iron pipe that has no break rates, when you consider the fact that these, that these upgrade and improvement projects are millions of dollars apiece, unless we are getting some sort of extra benefit by adding, you know, hydrant coverage that we really need to meet our ISO requirements or something like that, or if we're not having adequate fire flow in an area and we need to upsize from six to eight inches or something like that, unless there's another driver, it's very expensive just to dig pipe just because it's old. If you don't have break rates in the area, you would probably defer that down the road a little ways. We don't have any break rates, and the ductile iron pipe that was installed, I guess I would say probably not, it wouldn't be fair to say east of 28, but probably east of Euclid Avenue. It's probably, it's all ductile iron pipe and was put in following different practices. Most cases, when we dig those valves or that pipe for other reasons, we find that it was bedded in stone or stone dust, so it's not directly laying on bedrock. But ductile iron is re-annealed after it's formed, and it's a much stronger product. And even though Bloom's Crossing was constructed between 1993 and 2002, we don't have any break rate to speak of in that area because it's all ductile iron pipe installed differently. So I wouldn't say that pipe replacement is just an ongoing thing. It will always happen, but is it a set goal for us to continually just keep replacing pipe? No. We want to get rid of the high-break rate areas, keep an eye on our water loss, and make sure we don't have new high-break rate areas popping up. But it'll always be those high-break rate areas that get the focus of these water system improvements until we've taken care of those major water loss issues. And then there's other projects that we need to do. You know, we need to upgrade some of our booster stations. We need to, you know, take a look at our storage tanks if they need any major replacement. They're all aging, and right now, we're okay just rehabbing them every once in a while, but they'll eventually need replaced. So I wouldn't say it's just going to be a forever thing to replace water pipe. But when the ductile iron finally does start to age to the point that it's failing, you'll have a whole new problem. You'll have a whole new part of the city that needs to have this water line replacement going, so.
Yeah, and that, that kind of mitigates the need for my next question, which was to, I put you on the spot and ask you to provide some sort of rough estimate as to, you know, how many years we'd be looking at for the, the high-break rate pipe. But it sounds like even after we get out of that period, the ductile iron pipe, we'll probably need to start replacing some of that at that point in time, so.
We're hoping that it's, you know, I think right now, the industry is thinking that ductile iron installed properly should have a lifespan of at least 50 years. So we're not really there yet. You know, we're in that 20 to 25-year range. But you could be right. By the time we're done attacking these major phase water system improvements that are taking whole sections of, you know, cast iron pipe out of the original township and replacing them with ductile iron, we may get to that point where we aged out the ductile iron and, you know, east of Euclid Avenue. And maybe we, maybe it does become a vicious cycle. But there's always hope that ductile iron doesn't have a 50-year lifespan. It's not like ductile iron's been around for 200 years and we know what the lifespan is. We just know that the original anticipation was it'd be a 50-year product, so.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Carrera? Any questions?
The only question I have is on the vehicle fleet piece there. You're going to, and I know you said you're going to evaluate and see if we need that number of quantity over the future years. You may have possibly have some reductions on the vehicles, correct?
Oh, absolutely. We have vehicles that are four years old with 4,000 miles on them.
That don't need to be replaced. There's probably too much of a surplus.
Attrition, yeah. I mean, it's, as needed, yeah.
Thank you.
Commissioner Evans? Okay, no questions. And I don't see any members of the public present to speak during the public hearing. Any other comments or closing, City Manager Cole?
No, thank you for your time.
We appreciate it. And if I don't see any other questions from commissioners, then I'll ask for a motion to close the public hearing.
Some move.
Motion second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Time is 7:29. Is there any discussion before we, before I can offer a possible motion? Don't see any discussion. So then, unless anyone wants to make a motion, I can go ahead and offer a motion. For the record, I will say that I do find that the fiscal year 2026 to fiscal year 2030 Capital Improvement Program is consistent with the City of Manassas Park's comprehensive plan. And with that, I will offer a motion to recommend approval to the governing body of fiscal year 2026 to fiscal year 2030 Capital Improvement Program. Is there a motion?
Some move. Second.
Second. Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Okay, so we have no unfinished business to attend to, no report of special committees. And Administrator Barry, is there any update from Community Development Staff?
Thank you and good evening. Yes, I do have three items I'd like to share with you. First of all, we did get RFP responsive for, to our comprehensive plan update. We did, and... did, and the closing date was last Friday, or two Fridays ago. And we did receive eight responses, so we're really pleased with the response rate. And we are looking through and evaluating all the proposals. We do anticipate that we will select somebody and have that process going by the end of the month. And also, we did receive another rezoning, which is the one on West Prondelay and Manassas Drive. That is going to be a mix of different residential products, two over twos, as well as just feasible townhomes. So that is currently in the evaluation process. And we, we are working on the other rezoning, which is at Manassas Drive and Digital Drive. We are, the applicant has reached out to us now, actually this week. We sent comments to them a few weeks ago now. And they are ready to have a meeting for final clarification. So they will, once that occurs in the next two weeks, they should be resubmitting. So that, that is moving on track. And if it's in good enough shape, we'll, we'll schedule it for public hearing.
Any questions for Administrator Barry? Okay, thank you.
I would like to turn it over to Calvin. He has an item that he'd like to present and discuss with you.
Of course.
Good evening, Calvin Odell, Director of Community Development. I, over the past year and a half or so, we've been having ongoing discussions at the governing body meetings regarding initially driveway widths, and then that has kind of bled into parking in the rear yards. And in the most recent discussion, we brought up the fact during our presentation that our zoning code is really absent of any lot coverage restrictions regarding single family residential properties. And hypothetically, someone would have the ability to turn their rear inside yards into a hundred percent paved or covered surfaces, which is not ideal. You know, it leaves us in a position where we really can't control the amount of impervious surface that goes on in our single family districts. And again, we also don't require grading plans. So a lot of the problems that can be created by placing structures or modifying structures with additions or, you know, modifying driveways, front yard, rear yard areas, come from the lack of a requirement for a grading plan and the lack of an engineer to need to look at the topography and address stormwater runoff with those improvements. So we left the last governing body meeting feeling as though the governing body wanted staff to take some direction towards a zoning text amendment to address these issues. So we will be bringing a resolution before the governing body to support a staff initiated zoning text amendment. And that process will then, if the governing body so chooses to approve that resolution, will come back to the planning commission. We will bring some draft language examples from other jurisdictions, some draft language for a ZODA, and start the conversation here with the planning commission. And hopefully we can get a zoning text amendment put together that addresses those issues that we can find favor with the governing body with. So I just wanted to let you guys know where we're going with that and that you will be a part of that process. And we hope that that process happens as soon as we get a resolution approved. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, well, if there's no other discussion of any type, then I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion, second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries unanimously. The time is seven thirty-four.